Order, could I have a roll call?
Bob Wilbar.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Steve Caswell.
Thank you, and if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on December 2nd and one on December 16th. For members of the Board, our December 2nd meeting, we're planning to do some training and so depending what our agenda looks like, we would adjourn the meeting but then open our training session for that, for that date. I know we have a few minutes here, bear with me, let me grab my list here, so our meeting of August 5th. Mike, it looks like maybe you were here for August 5th, so do I have, actually, I don't think I have a quorum, oh, I don't think I have a quorum to approve, you know what Pam, I'm gonna hold the minutes till our next meeting. Okay.
That makes it easy.
Yep. So the first item on our agenda is an extension of final approval for Jackson Corners, Phase One.
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Just to refresh my memory, I think Johnny Getz was here at the last meeting, and I think through talking to him, the Board granted the one-year extension, and I think the issue regarding initiating road construction came up, and the Board wanted an update specific to Board of Health and where we stood with them, I'm just trying to remember, because I wasn't here personally for that meeting, so, I think the, the extension was granted.
I believe it was, yeah.
Okay.
I don't recall, I can't remember, I thought we held off until we knew whether we were allowing additional work to be done, and that's why you're back, because you were gonna work with the town to see, and Scott, I think you guys-
We had authorized the water at the last meeting, we wanted to hear more about the Board of Health before we went through with the drainage.
Right.
I'm not clear if the extension was physically granted or if we were doing it tonight, I don't know what the agenda says.
If it wasn't, we're obviously gonna pursue it tonight, but I'll give you a Board, I'll give you an update on the Board of Health. Their biggest issue through this whole process was, number one, verifying the soils once the material was removed from site. Marie Berlay from the Board of Health was out there, I wanna say in May-June of this year, and we retested all the septic areas, and the soil turned out to be run at bank gravel in excess of 10 foot in depth, and we were at finished grade on where we needed to be on our overall grading plan in the septic areas. The areas past the septic, where the hospital locations were, the driveway, the cul-de-sac area, they were not at grade in that May-June visit, they wanted to make sure that the septics were at least level, get her out there, verify it, and that's where we were when she was out to visit. Since that time, they have brought the material, the grade to finished grade, which we proposed in our original phasing plan to the Board. We just recently received an ASBIL survey from the survey record, and I can confirm that the grades are where they need to be across the entire site. There's some minor grading within each, each parcel itself, but the, the Board of Health's biggest concern was that there was no grading across property lines, and in fact, there's, there's no grading, it actually is surprisingly close for, for the amount of material that came offsite there.
So you're expecting them to be out for a little more inspection or something like that, or something?
Board of Health as far as inspections, verifying soils, they are done, that May-June visit confirmed what they needed to see in the ground, now it's just taking the ASBIL survey and forwarding it to them, and then just finalizing their report, dotting the I's, crossing the T's, that kind of things with the Board of Health, so. What I was trying to do was trying to wrap a comprehensive submission to both the Board of Health and to the town, addressing town engineers' comments along with the Board of Health, so basically it's one package submitted to the Board of Health and to you guys, because the applicant is, the applicant does wanna file this map relatively soon, they have two very potential buyers for the two lots in the cul-de-sac area, and they obviously wanna lock up contracts with them, so they are, I mean, pretty hard to file that map, so.
Okay. Scott, I know that there was a little bit of additional work that we talked about allowing it, allowing to be completed on-site, do you have any issues with that? I think we decided it was all inclusive in Phase One, and we weren't sure when we were first talking about it.
I think that's correct, the water line we said they can go ahead on, which they're still working towards.
And you wanted to put infrastructure in, I thought.
And they wanna do the drainage, which I don't think we have any issues with that.
Okay.
Bonds in place for, for the work.
Okay. So are we, are we comfortable that it didn't require a modification of the resolution? We're okay just doing an extension and they should be out?
I haven't reviewed the resolution, I don't know if that needs to be-
Re-yesed?
Yeah.
That's where we left off last time, is we needed to figure out whether we actually had to modify the resolution or whether we were just able to do the straight extension, the additional work they wanted to do prior to filing the map.
I think we don't have the resolution.
Is there additional work that you're trying to do on-site before you file the map, and let's make this easy?
We obviously wanna play the bond game and try to get as much road infrastructure in as they can before they file the map to lower that bond amount, so the intent, although the weather has not been cooperating this week unfortunately, but the intent is to get as much in the ground as they can before the hard frost comes in.
Have the, Pam, have the fees been paid, all the fees, inspection fees?
As far as what he was required for paying for where he was-
For phase, so we'll have to verify whether or not those fees encompass the work that he is looking to do, inspection fees.
Right, so Phase Two-
See, 'cause, 'cause from what I'm hearing is by reducing the bond amount, the inspection fee is based on that bond amount, now we still have to inspect the work that he's gonna do, whether he does it prior to the map being signed or after, so the fee would have to be based on the original bond amount. So we need to verify that. And you're good with that, I'm sure.
I don't think there's a way of getting around the inspection fee, I think that's always been the standard case.
So Phase One map hasn't been filed yet?
Phase One map has been filed, 'cause that, that broke off the initial Lot 6, which is off of Townsend, but it showed Phase Two being the, the grading aspect of the remaining five lots.
So Pam, do we mean to say Phase Two, 'cause the November 5th agenda did say Phase Two, but November 18th says Phase One. Right, November 5th, Lot 1. Phase Two, you already passed. Phase One, you already passed. So we're extending Phase Two, and we're allowing him to continue with work in Phase One as long as fees are paid as appropriate for whatever work is being done, so do I have a motion to extend for one year Jackson Corners Phase Two, and also a motion to modify as needed the resolution to allow work to continue in Phase One as long as all appropriate inspection fees have been paid and brought current?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then just work, if you would, with the Planning Office and with Scott to make sure that the fees are correct before you-
Sure.
Move on with that one. Okay, the next one on our agenda is Gray Palo, 11 lots at Gray Palo Road, this is again, two six-month extensions being requested, and in well before expiration is the request. Anything going on with this one that we need to know about?
Slowly but surely, we're wrapping this one up, we've been working with DEP Stormwater reapproved the reduction in lot count, and then-
To 10 or 9?
I think we went from 11 to 10, I think, so we're at 10 now. They approved that, and then subsequently, the environmental side, specific to individual wells, septic design, they followed up with their approval, so I recently received that about a week and a half ago. We submitted final copies down to both agencies within that department, expect them back relatively soon. I've been in contact with Joe to kinda brush off the dust on the bond estimate, which I think he did an initial draft revision on it, so I think we did the original one maybe back in 2009 or 10, I don't remember, it's been so long.
Yeah.
But we are slowly working toward getting this one done, the applicant has expressed obviously interest in getting this to the next level. Again, the market is relatively soft out there for a development of this size and the construction aspect of it, but they are slowly pushing ahead.
Okay. And Joe, any issues with the bond estimate or anything we need to adjust just based on the time that's gone by?
Yeah, we, we took a look at the numbers again, and I sent a copy around, it's just a matter of checking over the quantities, the unit prices, and finalizing the total amounts and the fees that are associated with it.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to grant two six-month extensions on Gray Palo?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all set, thank you. And the next one, Hunter's Ridge, eight lots, Devon Farms Road, expired again 11/19, and another six, two six-month extensions requested, and what do we have going on with this one?
This one actually has a little bit of promise to it.
Okay.
The last go-around we had, we were fooling around with Rieger Homes and the potential sale of the remaining Phase Two, which is the eight-lot subdivision, and the construction of the proposed road. Obviously, the deal fell through with Rieger. The applicant, John DeCicco, is looking to actually file the map and put the road in himself, in the hopes of, you know, if you build it, they will come, it seems like a lot of people are looking for individual lots but don't wanna hassle with the actual road construction aspect of it, both from a construction standpoint and from a lending institution for a developer. Mr. DeCicco is looking to finance this thing himself and put the road in, and he's working with Duneray Construction, they did Stone Ridge Estates. So, short-term, this one looks like it's going to happen. The applicant is looking to possibly break ground in the spring, I'm asking for a one-year extension just because things do change, but there is some daylight to this one, I believe. So like the Gray Palo subdivision, they've asked Joe to kinda shake the dust off the bond estimate and see what it takes to obviously wrap this one up and get this one to the next level. There is one provision that the applicant was requesting that we discussed tonight, and that was, I believe the final approval resolution is written that no construction shall commence before the filing of the map, the standard note that the town has. Obviously, we are entering into a, what is believed to be a rather cold winter season. Again, his intention is to possibly start February, March, just the way the timing aspect works with construction, building structures and land clearing and basically weather. So he was, wanted to respectfully ask the Board if he would have permission, that if he posts his fees and gets, his, his fees paid to where they need to be, based upon the reflected bond estimate that Mr. Dennis has revised, that, that provision could be taken off, and he would have the potential to start road construction before the filing of the map.
Just the road?
Just the road. Get the infrastructure in, basically what, he's trying to play the game with filing of the map, if you wait till after March 15th, you can save on, I guess, the property taxes, I believe that's the special date. So the hope was, if, if there is a fortunate break in the weather, and he does have the ability to, to start some work, he could, he could do that.
Scott, any, any objection to that, or any limitation we would wanna put on doing something like that?
No, no, I'm just thinking things through, first of all, the tree clearing, do they have any backup there?
We didn't have any other data up there.
So you don't have any limitations with the clearing, so that's not an issue.
Okay.
They normally have you cleared during the winters, in spring or summer.
Only thing I'm thinking of is, you know, it's a bit on the hillside, so I don't know if we need to have like a, consider a restoration bond just in case he gets started and pulls out, make sure that we can stabilize and restore the site being that it is on hillside.
Okay.
I think it's something we should consider.
Okay. Is that something that would be an additional purpose within the original bond? Do we just say file the orig, have the original bond filed, and it'd be of an amount that would cover the restoration if need be, or do we have to have a separate bond for that?
Well, it sounded like he was trying to not post the bond initially, so it probably had to be a separate bond just for restoration. Just your mark for that.
Do we have an idea what that would be?
Did that's similar on another project, I don't recall which one, but we did something similar for restoration, but we can work up a number.
Yeah, what I, what I've done, I know this is relatively short notice to the Board, but obviously Scott's a very busy man, I reached out to him, I'd like to maybe set up a meeting with his department and see what we could come up with, 'cause obviously stabilization, stabilization in the winter is a concern, and I've advised the applicant of that. So there are bonding mechanisms, mechanisms that we can come up with, and let's just have the discussion, and I think we could probably handle it offline if the Board's agreeable to that.
Okay.
I think we can certainly arrive at a number, then come back to the Board for approval or consent.
So are you suggesting we just approve the extensions tonight, but say come back once you have that squared away?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Is that, just so we know exactly what we're making a motion for, and if there's a need to actually modify the resolution itself, we can do it at that time too?
Right.
'Cause that way we have a better understanding of exactly what you're asking to do with the site before the map's filed.
Understood, we're not looking to break ground tomorrow, so.
Okay. I mean, I don't think I have any objection to that unless other board members do, I just would wanna make sure we know exactly what, what we're agreeing to and that we're comfortable we've got the right inspection fees and whatever bonding would need to be in place.
I agree.
Does only Scott understands it, I'm cool.
So do I have a motion to do the two six-month extensions for the Hunter's Ridge subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then just come back to us once you have the rest of the information.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for the Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan on Route 52.
Hi.
Hi.
Cherry Shack, can you can?
Hi. Do we have your, Michelle, do we-
We don't, we have some mix-up with the engineering, and so we're kinda here on our own.
Okay.
Been through the ARB, I'm not sure what we need.
Just bear with us once, we need to have your plan up, and then we'll reopen the public hearing. Thank you, Michelle. Are these the, are these the correct drawings for the-
I think-
The approved drawings? Okay, I'll let you go ahead and take this, you can, if you want, you can just set them up on the boarding piece, anyone from the audience would like to see them. And I don't know, did we have any bigger copies? Okay. Or did we have an electronic copy pen that we could, is it on the disk? Okay. All right, while we're putting up the drawings, do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for Hopewell Animal Hospital?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So the reason this was originally adjourned, I think we had squared away the questions on the site itself, but you didn't have your ARB approval yet.
Correct, right.
So you've now gained the ARB approval?
Yes.
Okay. Any significant changes to the building or the footprint of the building as a result of those changes?
No, nothing to the footprint, some small little cosmetic things mostly.
Thank you, Michelle.
The, in the front, on this projection, we were, we originally had a vent over those two doors, so we removed that vent. Same thing on the other side, we changed the vent from a square to an octagon, we flip-flopped a couple of windows, so all cosmetic though, nothing's changed on the footprint.
Okay. No change to the ingress and egress either?
No.
Okay. Anything else about the site plan that's changed since the last time we saw this?
Nope. Everything, everything's the same, it was just all colors and things.
Any questions or comments from board members you should have in your packages tonight, these are the updated drawings, I think that was really the only thing we didn't have last time.
No, I think it's a nice proposal, it's an existing business, it's a nice-looking building.
Yeah, it should be great if we can build it.
Brendan, anything on your end that we need to cover?
Yeah.
Joe?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Scott or Michelle?
No.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to offer comment on the Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan? Okay. Unless any of you, the board members, have any other questions, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the Hopewell Animal Hospital?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. What we'll do is we'll schedule you for a decision at our next meeting, which will be December 2nd.
Great. Now, we do, the next part is DOT or something that happens before then, or we'll deal with the engineers and stuff?
Yeah, normally our resolution would condition for whatever permitting that you would need from, from any of the agencies.
Gotcha, so December-
Second. Yep. Great. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Banano, three lots on Mountain Top Road. Oh, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jamie Keeper from Inside Engineering, Serving and Landscape Architecture, PC, here representing the subdivision for Florindo and Silvana Banano. The project is located on the corner of Mountain Top Road and Stormville, Mountain Road, but the, the property itself is an existing single-family residence on a 13-acre lot in the R3 residential zone. The applicants wish to subdivide the lot into three, three lots, Lots 2 and 3 being the new lots. The project has been for the Board in the past with different engineers, my office was asked by the applicant to research the files, to get the current status of the project. We met with the town consultants and confirmed such status. The proposed dwellings, driveways, and septics are in the general same locations. The Stormwater, Stormwater actually did go over a major overhaul and is all-new. It basically has been updated to comply with the Health Department, DEC, and DEP regulations. The plans have also been revised to address comments, previous comments from the consultants, and then we've been in receipt of current comment letters, and we'll address those in the next submission, so we're here tonight for, for the review.
Great. And I'm just trying to remember, and I don't know Brendan or Joe if you remember this one, was this originally, was this one was, it came to us under contract with the DEP, or was this a straight subdivision?
No, I think it was a straight subdivision.
Straight subdivision, okay.
It's a buildable space on this, the 13, how much is buildable?
I don't have an exact number for you right now, but if you can see-
Okay. And there's some steep slope too, right?
I think the steep slopes are up here.
Okay. So are you in sync with this, Joe, or are you?
Yeah, as far as the lot count, that was something we looked at under the prior application, and the numbers did support the three-lot layout, once you subtract the wetland and the steep slopes.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle, anything from your perspective, I know we talked about possibly reaffirming our intent to be lead agency and probably recirculate-
Yes, and actually recirculate because the Longyear Bat has been listed-
Okay.
Or is, it's actually been listed, I think it has been, and it's, in any case, they're looking at the Longyear Bat as well as Indiana Bat now, so we're just gonna make sure that DEC is on board. They had gotten a letter previously on this project for Indiana Bat, and they, the DEC was okay with, didn't have any further concerns because of the elevation of the site, it was above 900 feet, I guess, yeah, so.
That's for Indiana Bat?
And I don't know what, I don't know offhand what they have, I think it's very similar for Longyear Bat, but they should still be circulated.
Okay.
I believe the Indiana, I'm sorry, the Longyear Bat is a concern, 'cause it's the bat over 900 feet.
So it can, it can roost over 900 feet, so that, that may be an issue.
So we'll research that and get correspondence as we get it.
So that's probably also something just for the Board that we're gonna see more and more of now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? I know we had originally tried to see if we could get the house, the setback of the houses to be as close as possible, but I think is it the wetlands that's pushing the middle one forward?
Yes, the wetland buffer and the proximity to the septic system, there's very limited area on that one lot for the septic in relation to the, you know, all the different constraints, so pushing the house back really isn't probable.
Wasn't there some, I'm trying to rack my memory, the furthest lot on the left, the sidelines being close to the house, was there some question about moving perhaps the middle lot, house, over, to give them a little sideline and switch the backs over a wee bit? I vaguely recall that, 'cause it all seems like the side spacing between the house and the edge of the lot is very close.
I don't know what you're referring to, as that was a different engineer.
It's very vague in my mind too, so that's okay.
Well, I think it was with a different engineer, so. I think as square as possible, so you can see, kinda have two trapezoids there instead of, you know, as being, the lots being as rectangular as possible, so I think that's what we're asking.
I think that middle lot, because of the buildable area that's required, I, that's why it's the way it is.
Okay.
I just remembered some question.
When was the last time this was in here, was like five years ago?
Two, less than two.
That long ago.
Less than two.
Okay. Time flies when you're having fun.
Because they were all happening at the same time with DEP, and some of them were actual subdivisions, and some of them had contracts with DEP, and I couldn't remember which one this was. Okay. Brendan, anything from your perspective, site distance on the driveways, or anything else with the layout?
I think the last time we reviewed it, you know, we did determine that the driveways had adequate site distance, I think we had asked that it be labeled on the plan, even in table format, it's probably okay to just make sure that each driveway is labeled. The only other thing that we commented on was the location of the existing driveways on the opposite side of Mountain Top, is that right, Mountain Top Road?
Yes.
So there's, there's houses basically opposite the two proposed lots, right? Just to look to see where those driveways are, and if there's any potential to sort of align the driveways opposite each other, that would be good, but they're, I don't think the driveways on the opposite side aren't shown on this plan.
They are not, no, I was not aware of that comment, but I can add that, yes.
Okay. Those are the only two small comments.
Joe, anything from Morris, anything we need to review or talk about?
Most, most of our comments were geared around Stormwater, and I did have a brief discussion with our coworker today on some specifics, but it sounds like they can pretty readily address our Stormwater comments.
Okay. No major concerns then?
Right.
And then Michelle, aside from the bat, anything else that we need to?
No, I just, there are a number of agencies to circulate to, so I gave her a list in the memo that I created, but I would like her to just, before you review, just make sure that I have a chance to re, make sure I caught everything.
Sure. No problem.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Straightforward. Any other questions for us?
Almost it.
Okay, then do I have a motion to reaffirm the planning board's intent to be lead agency for the Banano three-lot subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any can work with our Planning Office and Michelle for the circulation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is Lawrence amended site plan on Route 52.
Hello, I'm Thomas Houghline, in the process of purchasing this property from David Lawrence.
Okay.
And I was just hoping to have a few restrictions removed from the original site plan. Number six, section six, number three, sales by appointment only, and number four, internet marketing only.
Okay.
And that's, that's just about it, I just would like to have those removed from-
And I think the basis for this is you own another automobile lot close by, or no? You're just-
No, I'm purchasing this from, from scratch, and I'd like to renovate the building and occupy it.
Okay.
For the same purpose, car sales?
Yeah, sell, sell a few cars, yeah. It just, it just, the language almost states that I can't occupy the building because it's by appointment only, or-
Right, the, the reason for that is there's extremely limited parking on site, and we were concerned that if it was just an open retail location, that if you had more, depending on the number of cars that were for sale at any given time, if you had more than one customer arrive at an employee or yourself on site, you would end up having people maybe getting boxed in or having to back out on 52 or things like that, so we just need to make sure that the parking accommodates use, and the original use that was proposed to us was very specific to say it intended to be internet sales only by appointment, so we didn't have as much of a concern about having two people there at the same time.
Okay.
So if you want to run this as a straight retail without, you know, sales by appointment, So if you want to run this as a straight retail without, you know, sales by appointment, then I think we just, and I'm just flipping through the application here, bear with me. So, item number two in the same list you were referencing, item number two says only four, only four cars for sale will be allowed on site at any one time. And with those four cars, I think there were only two other spots, which would have been the employees' spot and the customer spot. Brendan, I know you were out of the site recently since this application came in. Is there room for more than six parking spots, or?
What was delineated out there, it looked like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked like there was, along the front, there was actually six spaces. Then there was two adjacent to the building, and then it looked like there was the potential for one on the, on the west side of the building, so I would say a total of nine. But the issue with that is, I think the previous approval showed the parking to be delineated up against the property line and not, not the curb channelization that's along, along 52. And the spaces that are delineated out there now are up against the curb line.
And that was for site distance, was it?
I believe it was for a site distance of Hook Road. So, I think if those got delineated back to the property line, you're not probably going to be able to achieve the six, the six spots there.
Six total, you mean, six for, on the front?
Yeah. You know, I think that the two, the two to the, on the east side of the building and the one on the west side, I think those are, you know, those would probably be employees and, you know, a car there. But I don't think, once you, you know, move that back, it's probably like 10 feet. Are you familiar with the existing plan?
Um...
I think, was that submitted as part of the application?
Yeah.
Right. So if you look at that plan, see where it shows the...
He's got four from the corner, and then, I see.
And right now, if you go out there, the pavement markings, actually, they don't even look that old, but they, the stalls are, the stalls are up against the curb line and not, and not against the property line.
Let me ask a question. I mean, how many cars do you think you're going to have there?
I was going to, by by the rules, I was going to keep four, four cars there.
And so, how, you're going to be open, how?
I'm going to be the only employee. I'm going to, you know, self-run it. I'm not...
But I mean, so what do you envision your hours to be?
Maybe like 10 to 6, 10 to 6, 4 days, 5 days a week.
Really? Four cars?
Four or five. I mean, no, four cars is allowed. I mean, if I can be there, if somebody can be there, it's always better for, for customers, if there's someone present.
Right.
I mean, I, I know that I'm not going to be there personally a lot, because there's going to be, I'm going to be out doing other things.
Right.
But it's just...
Given that, I mean, is there any chance for like getting an easement to park your car or some others nearby, and?
Never thought of that.
As a workaround?
I mean, I'm basically going to be driving one of these cars. I mean, I'm going to have a dealer plate on a, on a car, and I'm going to be using one of those cars for my own transportation. So if I come there, it's going to be considered one of the cars for sale, I'm sure.
Okay.
Were you proposing any changes to signage? Are you thinking about changing it in the signage, since you're going to be there?
The sign?
Yeah.
On the building?
Yeah.
I would, I wanted to move it to a different part of the building.
So, just, that just needs to be, we just need to confirm that, because that's part of the, the location of the signage, it would be part of the purview of the planning board. Make sure it doesn't affect any site distance. Apologies, I was reading something, I didn't hear what you said.
He's thinking, no, I didn't hear, I heard, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said about the sign.
There's a sign at the, on the, on the front peak of the building.
Right.
I'd like to move it over on the left side of the building.
So it's going to still stay attached to the building?
Yeah, still attached to the building, not, you know...
Okay. It's not coming down and becoming sightline, okay.
No. It would, it would be on the left side roof, roof line there, over the office door.
And it would be the same exact time?
It is the same time, yes.
If it's the same size sign, I think we're okay. So Brendan, you're, you're saying that the curb stops were not put in place, so because they're all the way up at the curb line of Route 52, they're actually fitting six full parking spots here?
That's what, that's what's delineated now. But if you pushed it back...
Well, you can't use the right-of-way, right?
You can, provided you would have, you got to use an occupancy permit from the DOT. You know, but they're going to have the same concern, too, of site distance, so, I mean, I believe that, you know, that was, that was the rationale for...
Did you have a sentence, did you try parking a car in one of the sites up against that curb now to see whether it blocks site distance?
Yeah, well, I, I actually drove out of Hook Road a few times, and it's hard to tell with the lot being 100% empty, but it certainly looked like if cars were parked right up in and along that curb line, you'd have some site distance issues.
So, it was proposed to be a few feet back from the curb line?
Look at that drawing you have, you can actually see it. It was along the property line.
We can show you here if you want to see it as well.
You see how the spaces are along the property line? I don't know what the distance is from that property line to the channelization, but...
I see what you mean.
It's hard to tell from the drawing, Brendan, with, that the dotted line is the actual curb where the spots are going, so if you want to come up, we can point it out.
I see what you mean. The dotted lines are still before the white line on the, on the state highway, right?
Right. Right. But the part, the reason there's six spots there now is that they're actually going past the edge of the property line into the right-of-way of the road, because it's paved, but that's how they're fitting six cars there now. And they're not supposed to be doing that.
Okay.
Brendan, there's a process, though, that they could go to the DOT, the applicant could go to the DOT and find out.
To occupy the right-of-way, right. I mean, there is, I mean, there is a curbed island there now, you know, that delineates, you know, the, the property from, from 52. You know, but again, it needs to be evaluated for site distance. You know, the DOT's, you know, I mean, this board's going to require that, and the DOT's obviously going to require that. I mean, if you look at that, the drawing you have in front of you, Laurie, how many spaces are shown there?
It's showing, it's showing four facing the highway, and then it's showing one parallel to it here.
I'm counting three facing the highway, one parallel to it, one customer spot to the side of the building, and possibly another.
Oh, so that, that little triangle isn't a full space behind the shadow there, all the way to the right?
I don't, I'm sorry, I have, I've got a...
Oh, you have, yeah, you have something different.
I don't have the shading that you... I'm counting six spots altogether on the site. Four display spots, and one customer spot, or five display spots and one customer spot if the fifth car is a dealer plate.
And I don't know if that plan lends itself to being reconfigured in a way that, you know, could find you another spot or two. But, you know, that's something you could look at.
Well, if you're limited to the edge of property, then it probably doesn't. If there's some sort of permitting or easement to use part of the DOT right-of-way, it might be, might be feasible to fit more, but...
But that was the reason by appointment only was instilled?
Yeah, because the, the actual site, if the cars were all kept within the property lines, the actual site is pretty tight.
That's what the applicant represented, that he was going to make his sales by internet primarily, and that's why he didn't need any more spaces. It wasn't the board that instituted it, it was the applicant.
Oh, no, we didn't, yeah.
It was his request.
How he came to us, right.
But even if the parking remains the same, that can't be removed. I mean...
I think if you had four cars, I, I think at minimum you would need at least two customer spots, or you could have two people there at the same time that aren't going to be able to get out of it. You're going to have somebody blocking somebody else in. So if you wanted to maintain the four cars, and you were driving one of the four, so there'd be two spots open for parking, and you're opening as a retail establishment, I think that's probably closer to doable. I think your other option is to talk to the DOT and see if you can get their approval to have the space in the right-of-way as the property appears to be designed right now, and that's maybe your other option.
Or park at the neighbors. Look at that, too. Get an easement.
From which neighbor, though, are you suggesting?
Well, there's a hair salon right across the street.
Across 52.
Right. Yeah.
So you're encouraging employees to walk across 52 to...
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
I run Route 52.
Any of our high school students walk across 52? Hopefully as a crosswalk. Maybe not always.
It's been done. It's been done.
You want to have your thumbprint on that, though?
No, I don't think we want to encourage that, but I think there are other sites within, on the same side of 52, that you might be able to talk to neighboring properties. But I also think if you're driving one of the cars and you're willing to have four for sale, if one of them is your car, then you still have two other spots.
Yeah.
Even if you're within, you know, in your own property lines, you've got six spots here, and then up to you whether you wanted to talk to DOT. We would just need to know whether you're electing to do that or not.
I, I don't feel like a lot of people are just going to come in off the street to buy a car. I just, I don't want to be limited to that. If somebody does show up while I'm there, and, you know, I don't have an appointment with them, what do I tell them? Call me back in five minutes? I just, I just, I don't understand, I don't understand the wording, and I'd like, you know, I, I understand the car thing, the four cars, I understand that. If I have to take other avenues to change that down the road, that's fine, but I just feel the appointment only and internet marketing only, I mean, the cars are going to be displayed there. If there's cars there for sale and somebody sees it, they didn't see it on the mark.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're in disagreement with you. No one's disagreeing with you. What we're saying is, you need to have space for two customers.
Yeah.
What we approved was taken advantage of to a certain degree. So if we go back to that, and then we can revisit it, I'd be amenable to that. I don't know what the rest of the board, but...
I think the, item number four has two things to it. It says internet marketing only and no banners or other paper signs, and I think the no banners or other paper signs needs to remain in place.
That's fine. I don't want to...
I have no issue with striking the first part of number four, internet marketing only, unless anybody else on the board has a concern with that.
Nope.
And then number three, the sales by appointment only, I think is fine, but that needs to then be replaced with at least two customer spaces will be available at all times. And that way, if you, if you choose to use one of your four sales as a dealer plate car that you're driving, and then you have two open spots for customers, great. Otherwise, you know, the, the four cars for sale means you, you're parking somewhere else and you're walking to the site so that you still have the two of the six open for customers. Does that make sense?
Yes. I understand.
Is the board comfortable that, that ensures that we don't have anybody backing on to Route 52? And then again, you may have the option to do something else with, with DOT. If you do that, you would need to come back to us for a site plan amendment, because your site plan, as it's, as it's filed today, if you're not changing that site plan, you're, it sounds like we're not in agreement with it, with the paving, paving, striping that's out there.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly, I mean, I think something even, you know, some type of delineation or parking blocks or something, it's going to need to be put there to prevent you from pulling up to the curb line, or even someone that comes onto the site is going to pull up to the curb line. So there needs to be something. I don't know, I don't know if the previous applicant had something along there?
Actually, number six, let's take them out bumpers, so display vehicles will be out of the site distance, and those curbs will be pinned, so they're...
If they were supposed to put those, I don't think they ever put them in, that was the problem, right?
Yeah, the one thing I did notice, there were some timbers that were along Hook Road.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And I don't, and I don't know exactly what the function or purpose of those were.
I think somebody prevented people from using it as a turnaround, because if you spend any amount of time there, everybody gets, passes the soccer field and then uses that as a turnaround.
Okay. So it was closing off the drive?
I believe they closed off the drive, so people couldn't do that. I haven't touched them. They've, they remain the same way they were. They, somebody else stacked them on top of each other, you saw, right?
Right, yeah.
You know, like, I think at one point they were across that one entrance, so, on the Hook roadside.
Okay.
So that couldn't be, you know, people couldn't do that.
All right, so if that condition remains where they need to put parking bumpers in, I think that's fine.
Okay. So, number one, total of six parking spaces, two, only four cars, and we should amend to, to say for sale, because you could have up to six cars, and you get six parking spaces. So only four cars for sale will be allowed on the site at any one time. Number three becomes at least two customer spaces available at all times. Number four becomes no banners or other paper signs, and then five, six, and seven remain the same.
Very good.
And so six you would need to comply with, because you're out of compliance with six right now.
Okay. I have to get some kind of curb bumper, bumper, you know, curbs, to keep the bumpers away.
Right, like a...
And measure that distance from the, from the, from the survey here, and make sure they're a few feet away.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay. Any, any other comments or questions, or anything else? Brendan, anything else from your perspective we need to add here?
The only thing, and you might be able to confirm this, but on the, on the east side of the building, it appeared to me that there was enough room for two cars there. I mean, the, the plan only shows one. You know, it shows, it shows a car, one car on either side of the building.
Yeah, you can fit two on the east side, you're right.
On the east side, I mean, it even looked like there was a, it looked like there was two spaces there, so I don't know if the wording needs to be changed at all, but...
But we have an existing site plan, so if we need to, if we want to change to have more than six spaces on the site, then this is actually, that would become a site plan amendment.
Okay.
As opposed to amending the resolution that restricts the use of the site. So, I'm not opposed to that, but you would actually have to file to do, Pam, keep me out, but that would be a site plan amendment to allow more parking spaces on the site.
Okay.
So that's the story with the east side, but what's the story with the west side? Get it?
Okay.
Great humor.
We got it, Mike, we got it. All right.
Yeah, we got it, all right.
Do I, do I have a motion to allow the use at the, all right, the use at the Lawrence Auto Sales site to be amended as follows? The limitation in item number six of the resolution has seven items within it. Number one will remain the same. Number two will be amended to say only four cars for sale will be allowed on the site at any one time. Number three will see, say at least two customer spaces available at all times. Number four will say no banners or other paper signs, and number five, six, and seven will remain the same. So I have a motion to...
Which one used to say, oh, it was, okay.
Number four used to say internet marketing only, no banners.
And it was linked to the banners or signs, okay.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's a sign permitted on the building, we're fine with the, the location, as long as the size of the sign stays the same. So we're...
Yeah, you just don't want those flag, those cheesy flags and stuff hanging across the front of the place.
Sightline, sightline issues.
Well, and also, Ray, if you're putting things up by the curb, then you can have issues with people not being able to see.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Let's just also see where, oh, any other signs you may want to put for specials, but not have to go down to the building department to get a sign permit, because there's certain regulations.
I can put stickers on the windows of the cars, right?
Yeah, I would think so.
Like in the corner, a little oval saying it's a 2010, the price might be, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's if you're fixing something to the ground or something like, you just...
Okay.
All right, so...
So moved.
Did you need...
I believe the applicant is also under the ARB, and he wants to just change his to the expertise.
So we can't amend the resolution until he's done with the ARB, or can we amend the resolution, and then what, do we have to open a public hearing?
Even just moving the sign, an existing sign?
No, I believe he needs to resign everything.
Roof? Yeah, I got to put a new roof on it, siding. The ARB reflects on this decision? No?
Okay. So we can't take this as a minor site plan amendment, because that's really what we're...
Yeah.
No, but if he was just coming to get the modification for the language, and then six months from now wanted to redo his building, he would just go to the building department, I think, and ARB, he wouldn't have to come back to the...
I was just informing him.
Okay.
It's just by coincidence that he's doing both at the same time.
Okay.
And you are aware of the proposal next door?
Excuse me?
You are aware of the proposal next door.
Next door? Behind me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I am. Maybe I can get some parking there.
And you won't have to walk across 52, you'll be outside.
I'll have to jump across the creek, but, yeah, I can, I can handle that.
Okay. All right. So do I have, I'm not going to read it again if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, we already got it.
I think I had a motion from Don.
Uh-huh, exactly, so moved. Second?
I have a second from Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You bet. If you are going to change the way, anything different from the way the site plan is, come back to us for, for a site plan amendment.
Site plan amendment, and then I have to go to DOT after that, you think, or?
If you're, if you actually want to change the parking on the site, go probably to the DOT.
First?
Well, in conjunction.
If you had, if you had an idea, and you, and before you came here, it would probably be a good idea that you would reach out to the DOT.
Okay.
To make sure that they're okay with it.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for the Foster Road Professional Park on Foster Road and Route 82.
Good evening, Alfred Capelli, architect for Dr. Sinha at Foster Road. We, we submitted a, a small little narrative. I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to read through that. There's a lot of things happening down there. So that tries to highlight some of the major issues or to make it easier for me. But if you'd like, I can take you through what brings us here this evening.
I, I think that would be a good idea. Not all members of the board may be familiar with what's happened. And Scott, if there's anything that you wanna add as we go through this, please.
So Foster Road Professional was approved for two medical buildings on the corner of Foster Road and Route 82 back about 2006. It was approved, the buildings architecturally are one and a half story buildings. The buildings were approved for office space only on the first floors. We subsequently came back before this board for the approval of the partial use of the attic space in Building Two, which is the building in the rear for space, auxiliary space, ancillary space for the doctors' offices, break rooms, things of that nature. We brought that before yous and that was approved. I think that was 2009 perhaps. I could be off. Earlier this year, we came before the board. Dr. Sinha wanted to finish the attic of Building One, the building in the front, for storage only. Scott had visited recently and I'm sure prior to that, the second, or the attic space of Building One. And there's a preponderance of, of files on top of files on top of files. And the reason why we came here is because when the girls go up there in the heat of the summer or in the dead of the winter, they wanted it to be tempered, if you will, with heat. With the heat, we have to insulate and the insulate you have to protect with sheetrock. So you wanted to finish it. This board had no problem with that and granted us the approval to do that. Subsequent to that, yes, Michael.
Are those medical records you're storing?
Yes, absolutely, 100%. All medical records, I mean, there's a few little desks there and things like that, but.
But I mean, so, so it's kinda like a vault, it's gotta be locked at all times too, right?
Yeah, it was locked, yeah, Dr. Sinha had a.
This is not something that, you know, a passerby in the building is gonna be able to get into.
Oh, no, absolutely not, no, it's, it's, yes. Getting back to the 2009 approval of the attic in Building Two, again, it was partially finished, partially requested to be finished. Between the time I was here earlier this year and maybe a month or six weeks ago, Dr. Sinha, he did not finish the attic of the front building. He finished the attic of the building in the rear, which he had no approval for. He finished it to the point of sheetrock, insulation, heat, and a finished floor. Okay? And subsequent to that, he put two of his secretarial staff making appointments, calling up and verifying appointments, taking them out of the bullpen in the front of his, his doctor's office, and he put them upstairs to be in a more quiet location. A complaint came in from one of the neighbors, said, hey, there are lights on, et cetera, et cetera. And I think there may have even been a complaint saying, gee, I think there was some construction going on there. There were many, many complaints. I attached a complaint form and we'll get into that from the neighbor and, and we'll talk about that. Be that as it may, for now. So Scott went over and, Dr. Sinha, what are you doing? Cease and desist order, you gotta stop, you can't have this up here, you have to do whatever, you need at least a building permit as well as coming before the planning board. And Dr. Sinha agreed to do that. Yes.
Is the doctor mechanically inclined or did he hire a contractor?
No, he hired somebody, yes.
Okay, and so this guy goes ahead.
I'm gonna guess, yes, that's correct.
And without any permits envisioned and just up he goes.
And, and yes, it's, it's difficult to understand the fact that he knows that he had to go for Building Number Two and the Building One to get the approvals and, and then subsequently just finishes this on his own, without throwing him under the bus. Yes, he finished it, he didn't do it himself. So we had a meeting, we had several meetings with, with the doctor and Scott and, and Brenda from the building department as to the requirements and what he needed to do. And he agreed to, to take whatever measures and steps necessary to get the attic approved to be finished, but not to be habit, you know, habitable or used space. Now let me, let me, I'm gonna take one and a half steps back. And, you know, in between all these things happening, I guess it became apparent to Dr. Sinha that he didn't have enough parking. Had enough parking actually to meet the zoning requirements back then. And actually, we had an excess of parking by the zoning ordinance. But I guess in, in the practice that the doctor has, it became apparent that he needed additional parking. So on one side of the building, he started double parking for his staff, which came in as a complaint, on a complaint form saying that the site plan is not being followed. And subsequent to that, Dr. Sinha had made a contract or, or had an agreement with the Cronizer Building or the Ex-Cronizer Building across the street for some parking spaces. And even furthermore, not that he needed all of this, he contracted with the Valley Christian Church to use several parking spaces in their lot during the week when they're not in session. And he had a little shuttle vehicle going back and forth. That was for his own purposes, has nothing, I don't think it has anything to do with, with the board, but we'll discuss that. You know, the town has other thoughts about the, you know, who, who's responsible for off-site parking if I don't need the off-site parking? Dr. Sinha has even gone to the property to the west, the Mocelli property, who they always told him even before he, he, he built the existing building, that he would have the option of first refusal. Well, the senior, Mr. Mocelli, he passed away a few years ago, they're patients of, of Dr. Sinha. And the family approached Dr. Sinha and said, I think we're, you know, we're ready perhaps to, you know, to sell the property. So I mean, this is all going on at the same time. They haven't come to an agreement yet. There's four, three or four or five children that all want something else happening. Scott and I discussed the possibility of temporary parking, you know, to alleviate the, the situation. Any more than two or three cars, don't forget Al, you have to come back for a full site plan for parking or whatever you wanna do there, absolutely, absolutely. And we were gonna do that as a stopgap measure. And I was gonna present something to you this evening to talk about some, to alleviate some of the parking problems. Because again, Scott and other, other people are thinking, you know, you don't wanna park, you know, 100 yards down the road and have a shuttle. It'd be a lot easier and nicer to, to park right next door and to walk. Dr. Sinha is still in the process of negotiating for the property. I, and I told him, in my opinion, I would not vest myself in the property with any temporary measures because I think his ability to negotiate is not as strong as if he negotiates now. So he's negotiating to buy the property, it's very close. He may own it next month, next, you know, two months from now. And the first thing we'll be doing is probably coming back to, for a little, I'll call it amendment to the site plan. He'll annex that property to his, his site and we'll, we'll, we'll ask for more parking. But we're not here for that tonight.
Where does Mr. Damato live?
Right, he lives, he lives to the south, immediately behind him.
Okay.
Okay, so opposite on, on Route 82, he lives back there.
Up the hill.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Damato and Dr. Sinha, unfortunately, from the day the shovel went in the ground, there's been issues. As some of you may remember, we had lighting issues there, okay? So, and we still have lighting issues, but be that as it may. So everything that happens here, Doc, with Dr. Sinha's building, as, as, and Dr. Sinha wants to be a, a good neighbor. But every little thing that's happened, it's, you know, that happens here, it's, it's being scrutinized from the dead trees. That is part of the complaint form, which when we met out there, Dr. Sinha agreed, no problem, I'll, you know, I'll.
Has that been corrected?
I, I don't know if it has as of today. As of before this past weekend, it has not. And because we're before yous again, we have no problem doing that. Of course, being the argumentative type that I am, as I mentioned to Scott, where does this begin and where does this end? If I have trees dying 10 years after my site plan approval? And we're only talking about one or two little trees. But Dr. Sinha wants to be.
So the dead trees does not refer to the, any of the buffer, it is purely the.
No, not of the buffer, there's.
It's the landscaping.
It's the landscaping facing a, a Foster Road.
Didn't we also have an air conditioning issue here?
Oh, there very well might have been, air conditioning noise.
And there wasn't, and there was also one, I think, with the garbage.
Yeah, and it's still, it's still an issue with the garbage. And on occasion, and Dr. Sinha admitted privately and I think perhaps in front of Scott, when they get large deliveries of, of office supplies and what have you, yes, the garb, you know, the boxes aren't probably crushed up and cut up like they should be. They're put into the dumpster area, maybe Royal comes a day or two later. That's a big deal. The pictures are taken with those boxes of, of staples and everybody, and everything else in the dumpster area. That'll be addressed to the best of his ability, he knows it's a concern. I'll tell my girls to crush them up and do whatever we need to, just so not to have any photographs taken, et cetera, et cetera.
So would an easier solution be that it just raises a fence around the dumpster?
Doing what, I'm sorry, Larry?
Isn't there a fence around that dumpster?
Oh, absolutely, there's more than a fence, yeah. Oh, there's, well, I mean, again, it's a six foot high decorative wall, solid wall and what have you. Damato's up there, so unless we made this enclosure 20 feet high, he's always gonna have a view shed of this dumpster regardless. So there's nothing that could be done other than telling Dr. Sinha to, to make sure he cuts up the boxes and put them in tonight. That's, and that's only one issue, there are many, many complaint issues, but.
I understand, but is there any kind of requirement that a dumpster can't have anything above the edge of the dumpster wall? I'm not aware of that, I'm just asking, maybe there is, but. If Royal's not complaining, if Royal's picking it up, is that a, and it doesn't, it didn't look like there was trash to the side of the dumpster, it just looked like it was piled up in the dumpster. It's a property maintenance issue really, I think. I mean, ultimately, the idea behind the screening is that you don't see any refuse. And if you're seeing refuse, then the screening isn't appropriate or working.
Yeah, but I mean.
That's why I was asking if there was a fence.
From the second floor of a house, Michelle, you know, it's like, forget about it. It's like, I can see anything down there, right?
What's the elevation change? And the elevation change is significant.
He's way up there.
Yeah.
He's way up there on the hill.
I mean, this is, you would have to build like a silo.
You'd have to build a silo, it's an issue.
I think it depends on how often it happens.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, that's, yes.
That's the reality. If it's something that happens every once in a while when everybody has their dumpster overflowing and they have a party or whatever it is, if it's happening regularly, then I think it needs to be addressed.
Hey, but, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Has Mr. Damato and the doctors tried to go to mediation to try and find some mutual agreement for these issues? Cause this has been going on a long time.
I don't, I, I think it's, I think it's kinda beyond that. I think, I think that, and perhaps if it goes any further than a meeting tonight, a public hearing or what have you, perhaps Dr. Sinha or his wife or some of the staff members will either be here in person or write a memo as to the, and I don't wanna use the word stalking, of, of, of what goes on with Mr. Damato. And I like the man personally, I, I, I've known him for 35, 40 years. I put the addition on his house just several years ago. So, so it's just that they, they have a problem. And I don't think they'll ever be able to see eye to eye. Every little thing is an issue, it goes on and on, garbage.
But let me just stop you right there.
Yes.
There's a difference between little things and the doctor taking it upon himself to finish.
That's correct.
A very large area, I, I've counted six workstations up there. So as far as I'm concerned, you can have six people up there, not, not just two, there's six workstations.
Right.
Okay? So let's just make sure we're clear that there's a difference between nitpicking garbage bags and having six people that don't belong up there.
Correct.
Having the need to have people walk across Foster Road to park in other parking spots that agreements have been made unbeknownst to the planning board. So I just wanna be clear that it's more than just nitpicking about garbage. I think the neighbor has some legitimate concerns here.
Okay.
And that have been, now been brought to our attention that we can act upon, so.
Without a doubt, but I still think that there, I still think they need to be addressed separately. I think the, 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 the attic space notwithstanding, whatever you decide to do with the attic space, even if you tell them to rip the sheetrock out and bring it back to its former unfinished attic, those complaints are still as a matter of record and to be addressed by whomever, I don't know.
But back to Scott's point, I mean.
But you're not here for the garbage.
In all fairness, it's not just Dr. Sinha's practice anymore, there's an HMO in there.
Yeah, I mean, he's.
So I mean, there's.
I think, I think the way I look at this is, we all know medical practices have changed. But I think initially, when this building was likely envisioned and it was doctors' offices and now it's really, it's almost functioning more, it's sort of like a cross between urgent care and a medical group. You know, it's like, it's not quite as intensive maybe as an urgent care center would be, but it, it's, the hours are extended and there's a lot of activity at all times.
I believe it's seven days a week, I don't know.
And the hours are extended? Yes, sir, he's opening earlier, correct? He's opening earlier in the morning than he used to be, to accommodate people in the morning, my understanding.
He very well, maybe, but he is opening two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, earlier this month, he started opening on Sundays. When we discussed that, Scott says, make sure we bring it before yous because we have a six-day approval and he wants to now open, you know.
Is that a seasonal thing or is that a plan?
No, no. I, he, I asked him for, for a memo, which he sent to me, which I forwarded on to you just today. Basically, again, explaining the healthcare changes, that, that he kind of, that he kind of needs to open up three hours, four hours on a Sunday morning to facilitate his patients and people. Whether you agree with that or not, that's.
So, so Al, are you here for more building or just to?
No, no building at all, I'm here to take care of these, these problems and issues, I'm the.
Well, specifically, the doctor has a choice. Either he can rip out the sheetrock and restore that half of the attic to its original condition or he can get the approval from the planning board to leave it as it stands. So that's primarily why he's here tonight.
Right.
He's explained all these other issues and I think we need to have a dialogue about the whole big picture as part of this. But specifically, he needs to know, do I rip out the sheetrock or do I, am I allowed to keep it in? To keep it, he'd need the approval of the planning board.
I have a question, is he, is he, the, the amount of parking, do we have a, a sense of how much parking he actually needs? I mean, even if we were parked at the 1 to 150, which is now the parking ratio that's required for medical office, is that enough parking?
Well, we were there, the day that Scott and Brendan and I were there, I mean, again, even though he has one tenant that's not in the other building, the parking, the parking lot was half, half full, I mean, in all fairness. I've gone there before though.
It's hit or miss.
On some days and I couldn't find a parking space, so.
It's hit or miss, but that same day that we went there, that the parking lot was very light, there were 10 cars parked at the church. And church wasn't open, so I can only, I hate to assume, but that those cars are really his employees, that if he didn't have that agreement, parking lot would have been a lot fuller, so.
Okay, let's, can we just, I'm sorry, let's just, Building One has what right now? You've got the full first floor finished and what's on the second floor?
Nothing, except, except we have an unfinished attic with tons of medical storage up there.
Building One.
Building One, which is facing Route 82.
Are you requesting to do anything with Building One?
No, because, no, I already requested to, to finish the attic, you gave me the approval.
Yeah, they have approval, which we froze.
Which, which, they froze.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so as part of this, are you asking, are you abandoning what we've approved for Building One or do you hope to eventually build out?
Once I satisfy Building, you know, Building Two, he may in fact finish the, finish the Building One for some reason.
I gotta believe there's a pretty good chance he's gonna.
I know, but that's why, I wanna understand exactly what's there right now and where we're headed with it. So where we're headed with Building One is the upstairs will still remain, even if it's finished, it's not gonna be occupied space.
That's correct.
It's storage space. No desks where people. No desks where people sit there from 9 to 5, or they're on Sundays, or whatever.
That's not his building. However, in the likelihood that he purchases Maselli, and I come to this board with an amended site plan, part of that amended site plan, Maselli and Foster Road Professional in its entirety, we may in fact, again, ask for legitimate additional usage for space upstairs, but.
But, but I don't, I want us to say what's there right now?
Yes.
What is rightfully able to be there right now? If you come back for a site plan amendment, I'm fine with that.
That's fine, finish storage, finish storage.
So, finish storage on the second.
I just don't want you to, I don't want to be here six months from now, and you said, Al, nothing's gonna happen upstairs.
Okay, and I apologize that we haven't read this thing, but I just.
That's okay.
Last question.
No, it's confusing, no, there's a lot of things happening.
I was just gonna say, when you say it's not his building, he still owns it, he's just not practicing in it.
He doesn't occupy that building, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, Building 1, first floor finished, second floor will put storage.
Yes.
No other occupancy.
Right.
Building 2, first floor is finished, second floor also finished.
Is partially finished, which he has approval for, and about 990 square, square feet, even though my math and Joe's math isn't exactly the same, but that's okay, that's me more so than anything. There's about 990 square feet of unfinished attic on paper, but in fact, it's been finished by Dr. Sinha, which completes the whole attic of Building 2.
Finished and occupied.
What do you have, what do you have, what do you have approval for on the second floor of Building 2? What are you permitted to have there right now, regardless of what's there?
Nothing, a break, again, ancillary space, a break room, and all that, yes, a bedroom. There's a little conference table there, but we're also here, which I left out, because Dr. Sinha, okay, he takes a couple of glass panels, and he takes, and he builds himself a little office upstairs. And when Scott was up there, or when we meet, when we met there, Scott says, hey, while you're here, tell him that Dr. Sinha made a little office for himself upstairs. That's in my little narrative as well, so he cordoned off a little, a little space in that approved attic for a little office for himself. If you tell him.
Is he ever bringing patients up there?
No, no, no.
Are we sure?
I don't think there's any place to.
I think it's his private office, I think it's his private.
All right, so, storage space, break room, no permanent occupancy is what's permitted there right now. What's actually there is it's partially finished out with six workstations and a small office? Or is it five workstations and an office?
There is no office, and that's.
No office, it's just one open area without six workstations.
I thought we just said that he used lots of handling.
That was in the previously approved space.
In the approved space, that was supposed to be a break room, he did put in fact, an office in there, which is not shown on the plan.
Right, and I tried to illustrate that on this, on the little packet that I sent you.
I have, I have a bigger issue question. Why are we expanding into these areas if the space is being utilized downstairs? It seems to me obviously that we've gone beyond the approval of what was, was utilized downstairs, and that's why we're expanding upstairs, so.
Okay, Dr. Sinha's explanation, if you go into his office and many, many medical offices.
The microphone, you can stand up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought I was speaking loud enough. You had that little bullpen of, you had that little bullpen of nurses and clerical staff accepting patients, checking them in, checking them out, things of that nature. Dr. Sinha's explanation for the two girls upstairs was, those are the ones that accept the appointments, make the appointments, call up and say, verifying the appointments. It got too hectic, according to him, downstairs in this little bullpen, and he says, I thought I put them upstairs.
Okay, but there's been no changes to the number of suites or downstairs?
Everything is the same, the architectural plans, everything is identical, we took, we took a tour.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't get to the level of, you know, a plan can show an office space of X number of square feet. Now, whether the intent is there's gonna be one person in that space, or four people in that space, I don't know that we ever get to that. I mean, the actual spaces are the spaces as represented on the plan, but, but many of these spaces have multiple people in them.
Well, because the original parking.
Our parking does say per office, there's a space requirement per office, so we kind of need to know that.
The parking that it was, it was originally approved under, not the medical parking now, gave, it's 1 to 300 plus, you know, what, the number of suites and employees.
Correct.
So, so my, what I'm getting at is, have we exceeded that? Because in my mind, I, I know that we had 46 spaces or whatever it was initially, and I'm trying to understand if we've exceeded what was originally.
Absolutely, well, you've absolutely exceeded the parking.
Okay, that's, and that's, I think, a very different issue.
Okay, so you guys are gonna have to define me, what's a suite? How do you define a suite?
Don't you have the problem of, you had approval to build upstairs, and you built more than that?
Correct.
And then you didn't have approval to build upstairs, and you built it anyway. Does that summarize upstairs?
Yes, I guess, yeah, he, he didn't, he didn't get the approval for 990 square feet of finishing upstairs.
Right, right, that's why I keep it simple.
Correct, correct.
But that means that there's now more people working upstairs, so the parking question comes in.
There were supposed to be zero people working upstairs, regardless of the finished space.
Yeah, that's what I said about approved, but built beyond approval, and not approved and built anyway. That's why I was trying to.
Right, so he takes the two girls and he puts them back downstairs. He still has the same number of people working in the building, they're just not dispersed. They're in one, they're in one area, and, not that we, we, between the lines, when you, when we look at your zoning ordinance, but he's not gonna fire those two girls.
When he, when he put the two personnel upstairs.
Yes.
What was the space that they were occupying downstairs now used for?
The little bullpen, when you walk into a doctor's office, instead of having six girls shoulder to shoulder, he now has four girls, and the, and two girls went upstairs.
Okay, so the space was reallocated and changed, do you do anything else?
No, 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 the spaces.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, the space is still the same, it's still that same bullpen. That was the same eight years ago, and it's still the same today.
I was just trying to understand.
Sure, not a problem. I think one of, one of the things that's happened here, and again, it's, I'm not saying it's, it's anybody's fault, but, yeah, Dr. Sinha maybe comes in as, as an individual practitioner eight or 10 years ago, and now there's four doctors working in there. Doesn't, it's one, it's one office, there's four doctors. Does that designate four suites? Question mark, question mark, they're not all there on the same day anyway. Two days here, two days at Fishkill, two days in Fictipse, they rotate, et cetera, et cetera. But, and I don't disagree with you, and he realizes there's not enough parking.
I'd like to just add some personal observation, not in this particular case, but my mother in another facility, where we go there and we wait for two hours to see the doctor. And I don't think any parking regulation can anticipate the amount of parking spaces you're gonna need when you're there for two hours waiting to see the doctor. I mean, add up all those people that are, you know, and I don't know how long people are waiting to see Dr. Sinha, but there's something, there's a reason why you're grossly under the number of parking spaces you need.
Well, in fairness to Dr. Sinha, I mean, the entire way we practice medicine has changed in the last 10 years, or whatever it is, and, and the parking requirement that we came up with, which was changed shortly after, I guess it was 2008, or whatever it was, was reflected actual counts at the, at the medical center, so, that's what they gave.
Which basically almost doubled the requirement, right?
Right, doubled the requirement, yes, and even that may not be enough during certain time periods, and that's, that's, but, but more to the point, I mean, the question I have, and I, I can't answer this, is, is it just way too much stuff going on in this building? And even if we allow this upstairs space, is there still too much going on in this building for what was contemplated at the site with the initial approval of the site plan?
I want to be really clear, we never intended in the original approval, or in any subsequent approval or discussion, to have any occupancy of the second floor. We were allowing finished space for storage, for break room type use, that sort of thing, but never for somebody to be working up there, not in either building. So, I would be very comfortable, regardless of what happens on the second floors, as long as they cannot be occupied, right? That we don't have to count them as far as parking goes. But that still means that, to your point, you're not, you're not letting people go because they can't sit in the, in the attic anymore, you're just crowding this, the first floor. And we need to figure out what's the right parking for the first floor of this building based on its current use, and determine whether its current use is actually a change of use from its original approval. And I don't know that it would be logistical to say it's a change of use when it's still a medical practice, and we knew it was going to be a medical practice.
Well, right, but I think there's, and I, and I agree with you, and I think, but I think we also have to talk about what's actually, what's the carrying capacity of the building for that use? Because there's safety issues involved as well.
So, do you have, did your certificate of occupancy give a meaning on?
We still have the same waiting area, we still have the same number of, of treatment rooms, that has not changed. The occupancy hasn't changed from day one. The square footage, the occupancy is based on the square footage and the use, that has not changed. So, so the number of people inside that building is any, is not any greater than it was 10 years ago. It's not, it's impossible, I can't.
But our regs have changed since that original approval.
And, and in all fairness to Dr. Sinha, he, he's trying to address the problem, probably going about it the wrong way. He didn't know he had to come to you, he made agreement with two other, you know, local businesses to say, I, I think I need some more park, can I do it? And now perhaps we're being told, you can't really do that, so. But again, Dr. Sinha knows that he had a problem, and again, Maselli has always been, you know, the safety valve, but it's not there yet, and I'm not gonna promise you that we're gonna be here in six months and, and with a site plan.
Yeah, we can't talk about that unless you're actually coming to us for a site plan.
Right, absolutely, 100%.
So, that doesn't exist until you tell us it exists.
So, what do we do? We're telling him perhaps, forget about Valley Christian Church, forget about Cronizer's building, deal with the parking problem yourself, that's kind of not fair.
What do you mean, it's kind of not fair?
Telling him he can't find off-site parking? He's trying to alleviate.
Didn't we tell him that?
He's trying to alleviate problems.
All right, all right, just bear with us a second.
Well, first of all, I didn't do it under the purview of the planning board, and I felt that should be addressed by the planning board. And I don't believe there's a safe passage for these people on, on a consistent basis to get from point A to point B, and that has to be addressed.
Okay, can I address that?
Sure.
Okay.
But then we need to come back and talk about how many spots he's actually trying to.
And I've expressed this as, as well. Number one, if I have enough parking spaces per your code, I'm not so sure, but you guys correct me, that I need to come back for, to you if I want to park my cars across the street, that's number one. And perhaps you guys can tell me, or your attorney can tell us that, that's number one. Number two, we had this, we had the conversation about the mentality of parking on my lot, the required parking, and this lot, the required parking, and this required parking for this particular lot. When I used to be in the bagel stores, the bagel store, as everyone knows, the guys used to go in for a cup of coffee to the bagel shop, pull out and go to the drugstore, pull out and go to the pizza shop, totally ridiculous. I think the mentality has to change to park in one spot, and, and if you have to go and do your banking or what have you, that's what every little village and town does. And here we're saying, well, people aren't big enough, or they're gonna get hit by a car because they're crossing Foster Road to park their car across the street. I kind of think we're, I'm not so sure, again, that's our burden, but again, you may have a difference of opinion, but.
I, I agree with the whole thing about Foster Road, but I think Scott's point is really more germane to Route 82. I will say, though, I've been to that building, my doctor's in there, and I was amazed at how quickly people were moving in and out.
Right.
That it was, you know, it's a very efficient run for this.
That's a credit to Dr. Sinha, and his operation there, I don't go to him, but.
Okay, Michelle, forgetting what it was at the time, do we know what the required parking would be today?
It's 1 to 150, so, but I don't have any idea, I have to look at the square footages and the number, I, I don't remember off the top of my head. Do you know what they are?
No, but if it was 1 to 300, and it's 1 to 150, I need double the parking almost.
But it's more than that, because it's 1 to 1, it's plus whatever.
Plus the suites at the time, yeah.
Exactly, so, and I don't know what the suite number was.
I can, I can calculate that.
That's what I would like to know, I would like to know what initially was approved, the parking was based off of the square footage of the building plus the number of suites originally, and I'd just like to make sure that we're looking at apples to apples here.
Suites, I mean, can we, what's the definition of suites in that case?
I don't know, because of the parking requirements in before, I mean, I think what they meant at that time were office suites, essentially, because it really came out of that commercial office space requirement.
I mean, there's really only one area that patients go in, right?
That's, that's true, but I think in.
It's treatment rooms.
Right, no, well, not treatment rooms, but I think in all fairness to, when we came before, and I'll have to double check the site plan again, we may have treated Dr. Sinha's building, maybe his building is one suite, but we may have done the second building as three or four suites, knowing that there would be three or four different offices.
I'd like to understand how they initially divide what the buildings.
But they aren't suites, though, they're.
Well, if I have four different doctors, I'm calling them.
Building, Building 1 has suites, definite suites.
I'm calling them four doc, four suites.
Right under the door, Suite 1, Suite 2, Suite 3.
Yeah, 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 so I wouldn't.
The point was, the point is, that there was a representation of how the space was going to be utilized in the approved site plan.
And that didn't change, though.
And that, and then parking requirement was based on that, oh, you have the approval, okay, great.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, how, well, let's do this a different way. How many, how many parking spaces does Dr. Sinha feel he needs? Forget about what the requirements are, forget about what he had, what, how many does he feel he needs? Obviously, he felt he needed more, because he's gone and tried to make alternate arrangements.
Correct.
And he's tried to stack parking, it sounds like he's making agreements with neighbors. How many spots does he think he needs at his worst time of day, or whatever it is?
Okay, he's made an agreement with Valley Christian Church for 15 spaces. Whether he utilizes them all or not, I don't know, but 15 spaces, there's a contract there, and I think he has an agreement across the street for five, I believe. So, for a total right now of 20 off-site.
And the, the, across the street is across Route 82 for the five, and it's?
No, across Foster Road.
Across Foster Road for the five, and across?
And, and Valley Christian, same side of the road, maybe 100 yards up the road, but there's no sidewalk, so he has a little shuttle bus there. So, you know where Valley Christian Church is, yeah, I can show you on the area map, but it's about 100 yards from Dr. Sinha's property, but it's not really walkable, I wouldn't, and he didn't even suggest that.
You have A and G in between, so you have to walk down.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
And then the tricky thing with Cronau's area is that you're, you're walking in the middle of a block, so to speak. You know, if you were, if you were walking, you're supposed to walk at a stop sign where you have a stop bar and a stop sign, that's where a conventional pedestrian crossing would be, not at the middle of a block without a stop sign and pedestrian crossing. It's not to say it couldn't be made safe with some improvements, but as it stands right now, I don't believe it's safe crossing. And I understand employees come in early, as early as maybe 6 o'clock, and it's dark in the morning.
So, is it primarily the employees then parking, where the shuttle is running back and forth? Or are there actually patients, where they're running a shuttle all day long with patients?
I, I can't state for a fact that it's only employees, but I know it's been designated. All of the off-site is designated employees, but it may in fact be that there are other patients, and I can find that for you for the next meeting, I can find out exactly what those percentages are.
Okay.
We've all had complaints about cars parking along Foster Road, which we're gonna endeavor to put up signs.
Which, I mean, that really shouldn't be.
Well, we discussed no parking signs, and if it's, but it's not our property. If you want Dr. Sinha to put no parking signs on Foster Road, he'll do it. If you want him to pay to the highway department to put them up, but that's the only thing we still have to vet out. Who's responsible for those signs, he'll, not a problem, he doesn't want people parking out there either. So, that's, that's not an issue, that's not happening that often.
We still don't have a list of all the issues and what we're gonna do about it, right? I mean, that seems like where we're going here, yeah.
Yeah, you guys have to work on a list of partially of what I gave you.
I got Building 1, I got Building 2, now we're working on parking.
Maybe that's the best use of this board, but what the heck?
There's added space, you, under proposed, where is that space now? Added space, because this is 46 provided, this is 47 provided.
Based on the original approval, he doesn't need to change the number of parking spaces, does he?
Yeah, we figured six suites in the entire part, the entire.
Between the two buildings.
Between the two buildings, so we did count.
Probably three and three is probably what you've figured.
Maybe, yeah, it could have been Scott, or two, or whatever. We did, it wasn't just square footages and, and one suite and one suite. Now, we understand that if that day comes that we do purchase Maselli, and we do come in for an amended site plan, that the parking, that parking layout is out the window. The total cumulative parking is gonna be obviously based on today's standards, so it's not like, so.
Based on the original approval, there's a, there are sufficient parking places right now.
Yes, yes.
So, in an, as is, or you, as is used condition, the parking is sufficient by the code. So, in an, as is, or you, as is used condition, the parking is sufficient by the code of when it was built and approved.
By the code.
By the code. That's what I'm going, by the code. So, his getting additional spaces is a private contract between him and other people.
Yes.
So, by the code, unless-
But you could also argue that those are other people, that they have a right to give away their parking spaces without coming back to the board for an amendment.
I have no idea, that's where I was going next.
Yeah.
Every site plan has required parking, so when we have cross-access being granted, we need to make sure both site plans can accommodate it. And I don't doubt-
Yes.
-that the church has available spaces during the week. That makes perfect sense, but that's normally something that we would look at as a, either a minor site plan amendment or something like that, just to make sure we understand what's happening. And normally, I think the town attorney likes to review the agreements, or we have the agreements filed, so that everybody understands exactly what the, uh, the agreements are.
And I think it's great to share parking, because I'm, I'm all for that, I'd rather not have the pavement if we don't need it.
Agreed.
But it also allows the planning board the opportunity to address any potential safety or lighting issues, because we have no idea if the parking lots that they're walking from are even lit appropriately for the hours that they're in operation, and all those types of issues that would be looked at if it came back to the planning board.
I guess I-
What happens if we say you can't use off-site parking? Does that restrict the use of the buildings?
I guess he'll just have to, until he does something with Maselli, I guess he'll just have to restrict his, his, the patients coming in. I guess he has no choice. The people have no place to park, and they're not going to be allowed to park on the street anymore. He's going to have to do something, you know?
Can we do that with employees? I thought if there's a shuttle service, that that was not, is that in our purview?
To utilize a park and ride. I mean, I don't know where a park and ride is, but make it a park pool.
Yeah, I mean, to say-
Well, the problem with the shuttle, it, it sounds good until somebody shows up later to miss those hours, that I have to leave early. I mean, a shuttle, you know, it's, I commend him for at least going that far, but I don't think it's perfect.
Well, I assumed it was one of his own employees driving a car back and forth to-
No, I think he has some service.
I don't know, I don't know exactly. Mr. Tomato probably knows, because he's, he's followed the shuttle back and forth several times, I understand.
I, I was just trying to get the issues. We have the building, no building approval, no-
That's correct. Well, we have parking.
And we have parking that meets the original-
That's right.
Approval.
That's correct.
Now, do we really get involved if people allow somebody else to use parking in their area that's, they're not using right now? I don't know what the legality of that is.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, that's what, you guys are going to, you guys are going to figure that out, and tell me what needs to be done.
That, that's where I'm getting confused. I don't know what you'd do about that.
Sure.
The last thing is, then we have the complaints about another garbage, and all the other stuff about the war between these two guys.
That's correct.
Well, the complaints about things like that would definitely not be perused by the board, as long as his site plan has the appropriate, and take the refus as the example. If he's got the refuse container and it's properly guarded, the actual maintenance of that site is not-
Yeah, well, I know Mr. Tomato's also complained about the lighting over the years and lots of other things.
Sure. I agree, Lori, but I, I included it anyway, just so that you knew.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just trying to see if it's possible.
I appreciate full disclosure. I'm not complaining about full disclosure.
Sure. And also the hours, okay? So, we're here, if we're going to amend the site plan, whether you want to grant him the use of Sunday's limited hours based on the little narrative, and you can review it between now and perhaps the next meeting to see if you buy into the changing world of, of, of healthcare.
But as of right now, he is operating those hours. Is that what you're saying?
He's, he just started earlier this month, that's right, and if somebody was to say you can't do it-
Does anybody object to the-
But I don't think there was anything-
The hours are against our code.
The only thing that we saw, as far as any kind of limitation on hours, was evening, the lights have to be off by 10 o'clock or something like that. There's no discussion about AM, there's no discussion about weekends, and if it's B1, I mean, every store, any store would be open on a Sunday.
The issue is, I mean, I, I think we're just running up a classic changing-
But, but if anything, the hope would be if you're crowded and parking on the weekends, and you can shift some of your patients, as opposed to adding patients to have, on the weekend instead, maybe you've got more parking for everybody.
I mean, the, right now, the proposed use on the site plan says professional offices. The question is whether or not professional offices at the time were contemplated as medical offices as well, which it may be that they were.
I believe we knew it was the doctor at the time.
Because, because you typically would, would have said, "Oh, professional offices have a pretty low use. You have a lawyer in there, maybe working nine to five," or whatever it is, and you're not going to disturb residential uses or, or-
But I believe we knew that it was Dr. Sinha at the time.
I think, I think pretty much, yes.
We knew at least his office was going to be there. I'm not sure if we knew the whole site was going to be medical.
That's, that's a question. Right.
So, I think if you go back in the minutes and everything, I don't think it was ever-
I know we knew he was going to be there as a medical office.
Yes, if there was ever any discussion about anything other than medical.
Okay.
So, there are the complaints, which are aside from us.
Yes.
There's the building, no building, which is in our, our jurisdiction, I believe. And the parking, as originally approved, meets the, met the requirements at the time, or does it now or not? We don't know.
Correct.
And can you allow other people to park in your place under private agreements? We don't know. Is that a fair estimation? Some of the three, the two things we could address, as far as I can see here, are just the building where you built more, and the building where you weren't supposed to build at all and built.
And, and the parking.
And the parking, and the hours of operation.
Hours of operation, the lighting plan. That's the list I got.
I thought the hours of operation were open.
Well, there was a minor lighting issue as well, but I'm not sure that was major.
I'm, I'm asking that the hours of operation, should that be amended? But according to Scott, it's, it's, it's not a purview of the board, perhaps.
That's what I understood.
But we're here to ask the questions, so somebody tell us and-
But I think, but again, I say it's not purview of the board. We have to go back and check the minutes of the public hearing to see what was represented to everybody, because you may have to revisit that if, if something else was represented.
Not a problem.
So, I want to, I want to be very clear in what the doctor is asking for. He's expecting to be able to finish the second floor of building one, and understands it's still going to be unoccupied space, but able to store files, that sort of use.
But you already gave that approval, so that's not even part of this.
No, I know, but I want to be really clear what the doctor's expecting.
It's not part of it, except that, I mean, of course, you could rescind it if you felt the need to.
And building-
As we go through these, can you, as you state what the issues are, the expected resolution, or who's going to go look at them too? So, we, we leave here with some, who's going to do what?
Yep. So, building one with the second floor, I'm not sure there's anything to do as far as that goes, except that we're not constructing, not allowing the construction-
Yeah, it's frozen right now. Basically, we just, we just put that on hold for the time being.
Building two, we have two issues. We have inappropriate occupancy, and we have space that was finished that shouldn't have been finished. So, I think you've represented to us tonight that the inappropriate occupancy up on the second floor has been resolved. Everyone's moved back down to the first floor?
Yes.
So, no permanent occupancy on the second-
And we had asked that the workstations be disassembled as well.
Okay. And so, no permanent occupancy on the second floor. Are you requesting that the, the finished space that wasn't intended to be finished remain finished?
Sure, absolutely. I, I, yes.
For storage space or break room space, but not occupancy?
At this point, yeah, I think it, I don't want to say, I think it'd be crazy to ask them to take the sheetrock down, but that's your decision to make.
Well, let me ask the question of Scott, though. Scott, are we confident, it sounds like this space was finished without a building permit. Do we know whether the electrical, whether there's anything there that's concerned?
Well, it'd have to do an as-built forensic, you know?
That's correct. And that was discussed as well. You have to get a building permit, Al. You have to, going to have to get an electrical inspector in there and making sure that, so we'll have to file-
I mean, that can be, there's steps, there's steps to resolve that.
Yes, yeah, definitely have, we have to file for a building permit, and a legal CMO would have to be given for it as, as a storage space, absolutely.
They pay a penalty, you know, double the fee, because it's done as a, after the fact, as opposed to-
Isn't it also insane to move the two people downstairs and just make them more crowded when the space is already there, or rip it out? I mean, that, that just seems kind of crazy.
Well, I invite you to come to my next meeting I have with Mr. Tomato, and have that conversation with him.
Okay, that, that was my next question.
No, there was never an intent to have occupancy on the second floor. We cannot have occupancy on the second floor. He does, he, at, at the point where he comes to us with additional parking or a lot next door or something like that, if he wants to talk about expanding the use of these buildings, that's a totally different conversation. But where he is right now with the parking that he has, the-
But he's saying no additional people.
I don't see how you can condone that.
If it's a new site plan application, you can ask us-
It just further exacerbates the problem that exists.
Now, does miss, does, does anybody working on the second floor bother Mr. Tomato? Aside from the fact that everything down there bothers him?
Probably.
This isn't an issue of whether the neighbor is annoyed by it or not. This is an issue of whether he's allowed to do that, and whether we have the parking in the site plan that permits it, and we do not.
Can we, yeah, can you just continue? Let's, Lori, recap the, the list, please.
Okay. So, Scott, you're comfortable that the partially, that the, the unfinished space that's now been finished, you'll deal with through the building department and whatever inspections you need, that will remain unoccupied?
And they have to meet all the, they'll have to meet the requirements. They'll have to meet those, yes.
Okay. And it will remain unoccupied or used, but, but used for a storage space or break room or whatever, that's-
If that's a purview of the board, yes.
Okay. I, I don't see having him rip it out, as long as the building department can get comfortable that he meets all of the guidelines. Does anybody have a different opinion about that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, in a perfect world, we have a means for a fine if we find otherwise, but I don't know that we can do that.
If the, you mean if the building department has that, or if the planning board has that?
In other words, if we go back two months and we find the workstations back and, you know, on a spot inspection.
I think that we need to talk about maybe some regular visits, just so that we're comfortable, because unfortunately, the track record here isn't the right thing.
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay. Does that work, Scott, that way, just randomly as, as needed?
Regularly unscheduled visits, yes.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have objection to the expanded hours of operation?
So, now it's seven days a week, or is it?
Seven days a week.
And I would, I would probably tie that inspection to those hours. You know, if you're going to say, "Okay, you can operate these hours," if he occupies that space, he loses those hours. And, you know, I think that's a good-
Okay.
Can I just say, in, in terms of the community, this is a doctor's office performing a very useful function. You know how tough it is to get an appointment with a doctor in a reasonable amount of time? I mean, all, all we would do is hurt the patients if we cut out of Sunday hours. That, that sounds like we're hurting the public.
So, you're in favor of supporting the expanded hours?
Yes, I am.
Michael, are you in favor?
I am, but I think Michelle raised an interesting point about different lighting hours for holiday, I mean, for weekends.
I, I'm not so sure there are only, there is only morning hours, and we can tell you exactly, so the lighting will hopefully not be an issue.
Okay. I don't know.
So, we're going to direct, we're going to, we're going to direct you as the applicant to provide to us the detailed schedule. If it's going to fluctuate between summer and winter, if there's going to, whatever his planned hours of operation are, we need that schedule.
That's fine.
Seven days a week is fine, but we need to understand the hours. And then to Michelle's point, we're going to revisit lighting and things like that as needed, based on the schedule that you give us for when he's going to run. And please make the distinction, especially with winter versus summer, if he's going to change, change hours like that. And then Scott will know exactly when we expect people to be there and when we don't.
And then, just as a minor note, but they drop off the lab samples, and then the, a service comes and picks up, and I know that was also another complaint, that they, they could come at any hour of the day-
That was a complaint back when he was complaining about the lighting. It's very loud.
Pick up the samples, and there's a diesel engine running, and maybe the guy slamming the door and all that kind of stuff. So, I think to the, to the greatest extent possible, they need to relocate where they leave the samples away from the residential side and put them furthest away from.
And the doctor agreed to it. It seems that the back door or the side door, as the people leave, leave the samples there, and it happens to face Tomato. And I wasn't aware of, of, of that concern, but when it was discussed with Scott being there, I think Dr. Sinha said, "I'll just put it on the other side of the building, between the two buildings, and tell them to pick it up there." It's an inconvenience to him, but he'll do that nonetheless, just so that-
And I mean, it just, I remember this issue. The issue was that, that they would drive up near the dumpster. They'd often leave their doors open with the music blasting or whatever. They'd go out, they'd grab the things, they'd slam their door, and it's right near their bedroom.
I mean, how many other complaints have you had with doctor's offices adjacent to a residence? And there is many, many, many of them in this town, where there's been a complaint about the location of that little box that gets picked up.
I don't think it's the box that's the problem.
That's okay. He's going to take care of that. That's okay. He's going to take care of that. He's going to move the box. It becomes a non-issue.
Okay. So we're committing to the movement, move, move of the box. Is it a permanent box and they open it, they have a key to open it, or does the box actually trans, get transport? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the box.
Jeez, I don't even know. We talked about this little box there. I don't know if it's a, you know?
I don't know. I think, I think, because it would be nice if we could, if we could see the box there on a regular basis.
They're not, they're not locked. There's usually multiple boxes because there's multiple testing services that really happen in our building. There's usually at least a half a dozen of them. They're like the old, they're really like the old milk, uh, cartons.
So they're permanent and somebody just comes and has a key?
They're not permanent. They're just, they just sit on the ground. They sit on the ground.
And somebody picks them up and takes them with them?
They open them up, they pull the samples out, they close the top.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't mean permanent like a fix. I meant permanent like, it's not that somebody's picking up a box and it's.
Very scary.
I'm learning more and more about the medical.
The thing is, if you.
Spaling medical samples.
If you look at boxes in the middle of the building instead of where the dumpster is, that's forty feet?
No, it's the other side of the building, which is probably eighty or a hundred feet.
Okay.
It's an inconvenience for the guy who picks it up.
Okay, it's the other side of the building. I didn't understand where it was. I thought we were just moving it down.
It's not an inconvenience.
All right. So let's also, you're going to give us your hours of operation. You're going to change the location of the sample pickup site to be between the two buildings. Can you also give us the number of doctors that are occupying each building or if not occupying right now, that are intended to occupy? And if they have a revolving schedule, let us know what's the maximum number of doctors on site at any given time, like their worst-case scenario. Because I'm sure it's not all of them, right, if they're all sharing space.
No, I mean, if there's only X number of treatment rooms, you know, you can only see so many patients.
So just give us a feel for how many doctors are rotating through and then on both buildings. Michelle, is there anything else from an occupancy and?
Well, how many treatment rooms are there?
I don't, I don't recall. You probably have, the plans have not changed.
Yeah, there's no, nothing in here about treatment.
When we, even when we submitted to the ARB, we submitted preliminary plans and that hasn't changed.
So we'll have to get those. They're not, they're not what it said.
Lori, just looking at the idea of trying to evaluate parking demand, maybe instead of just doctors, it would be actually employees, all right, staff, you know, permanent.
I was getting there.
We'll get staff.
What I was thinking, though, with the doctors, is you have, you have groups of patients, right, that come with a doctor? So the, your, your permanent staff, I'm assuming he's there every single day. So you have some set of permanent staff as the support staff for the office?
Yes.
So you'll tell us what that is and the number of treatment rooms.
Lori, are you intending to, are we going to have a public hearing before we make the decision on the upstairs? Are we going to get to that stage in this process before we rule on that?
From my perspective right now, as far as the upstairs go.
Yeah.
Building one is on hold, but they will, assuming they fix everything else, they are going to be able to build whatever we improve there. Building two is in, is in the building department's purview because they can't use it for any other purpose than what we've already approved, but you have to assess it.
No, but, but they came, for, for building two, they came to the planning board for a minor amendment to finish the upstairs. There was no public hearing as part of that, okay? And in theory, they'd have to come back to the planning board to have the upstairs finished in the second half. And I think in consideration of its relationship to the residential neighborhood.
We haven't even gotten to the point that we're ready to do public hearings, though, Scott. I mean, we're still trying to gather information.
Okay. I just don't want to, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with a decision tonight unless we.
No one's making a decision. We're going through the list of things that the board needs to see to be able to figure out what we're doing here. So again, so far, changing the sample pickup location, documenting the number of doctors, documenting the hours of operation, the number of treatment rooms, the number of support staff or permanent staff. And then I think just confirm for us if we don't have it already. I know you said five and fifteen in the two sites, but just confirm for us exactly what he has in the offsite and what he thinks he needs.
I'll get you the contracts that he has with the two.
Perfect.
Groups. Not a problem.
All right. So I'm expecting that there's no use of the second floors except for whatever storage is happening right now at all. There's no occupancy up there right now. Again, minor break rooms or whatever, I don't care. No occupancy.
That's our expectation.
Okay. I'm just making sure that Mr. Capelli is agreeing with me as I'm saying that because.
Other than, other than a break room, other than what.
Other than the break room or whatever, right, right. Break room, storage space, but nothing else.
Right.
In either building.
I mean, they do video conferencing, which is not, does not add employees. That's just a convenience.
Yeah, they have a little teaching, yeah, conference area upstairs.
Okay. Michelle, was there anything else that we needed to be able to try to assess parking on site and understanding the occupancy as compared, as, as approved as compared to what's there right now?
Not that I can think of right now. I may have more questions once I delve into this a little bit more. I'll.
I'm sure we're all going to have more questions since we delve into this.
Can you work with the applicant to document that? And Brendan, if you have, if you can, once we get the parking agreements, if you can look at where they are, where they're located and figure out if there's any, any minor improvements that could be made to get pedestrians safely from offsite parking to onsite parking, to, to the site, I'm sorry, offsite parking to the site.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, tread ahead in trying to, you know, calculate a parking demand, you know, the, the actual operation of the office. And if there's two doctors there at any given time and there's appointments every fifteen minutes or whatever it is, I mean, that's, should be a fairly easy thing to ascertain and that the doctor could know. Though, you know, granted, someone might be in an emergency or things might get stalled and appointments start stacking up. But there's something, you know, I mean, the, you know, the typical operation, you know, should be able to be sort of vetted out so that, you know, we can see if it's a, you know, a problem that happens once in a while, when women's get backed up, or is it something that's going to, you know, it, it sounds like it's something that reoccurs every single day if he's already, you know, he's already went to seek offsite park, parking.
Okay.
It's throughout the week. I don't know that it's every day, but it's several times a week.
Well, we'll, we'll try to get his staff to put together. It should be a science.
Seriously, guys, we're just going to have Lori read the list one more time and nobody's going to interrupt, okay? Because it was about twenty-five minutes ago Lori started reading the list the first time.
Here's what we'll do. We'll have Mike put his hand right here and I'll put my pen above. Everybody watch.
I think it would hurt less than this proposal, actually, now that you mentioned it.
All right. I don't mean to laugh. I'm sorry. I just.
We're making a list and we're checking it twice. Here we go.
There we go. All right. Nothing with building one. We're frozen on the second floor. Nothing with building two at this time. It's the purview of the building department to decide what the finished space will be. The permitted uses remain, storage and break room space if there's a conference up there, whatever, but it's no permanent occupancy. The applicant is going to provide back to us hours of operation, appointment schedules, number of doctors on site and how they revolve through the site, how many are on site at any given time, number of treatment rooms, the number of support and permanent staff. We're going to make sure that the samples for pickup location has been moved to between the two buildings. And that should be for both buildings. They should be, you know, kind of facing each other if, if possible. And you're going to provide, sorry, the parking agreements for both sites, including number of spaces that are being used. And you're going to let us know whether there are more site, more parking that the doctor feels he needs. So does a doctor feel he's good with what he's got offsite and onsite right now, or is he still looking for more? That's, I'm concerned to see that there's cars parking on the road, which tells me maybe he does, still doesn't have what he needs.
And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have figured out about those signs on the road and they'll be up. Whoever wants to put them up, you know, we'll put them up. So that's all, all over and done with. That's not a problem.
As far as parking on Foster Road?
On parking on Foster Road, that's correct.
Okay. So, and no parking signs on Foster Road.
And I'm jotting these down if you can do me a favor.
And then I'm going to ask Michelle again. I know I, I started to ask you this a couple of times. Is there anything else you think we need to be able to be comfortable with what was approved for the site versus what's there now?
No, as long as we have the stuff in the building department that.
Okay. Then I think if we get that additional information, that lets us kind of take a look at the big picture. If something changes in the meantime with the neighboring property, let us know as far as, you know, if you decide to change it to some sort of site plan change, that's fine. Otherwise, we're dealing with exactly what's there and we're not, we're not going to be able to consider what might be there in the future. It's going to only be what's there right now.
Absolutely. But I don't want to go on record saying that we, you know, we may be back. And hopefully we're back to alleviate the problems.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough. I just, unless that changes while we're doing this, we can't consider that even though, you know.
Not a, not a problem. Now, can I get on the next agenda to discuss this? If I get this to you?
If we have all of the information.
By?
Normally, we need it by the end of November to be on the December 16th meeting. Hey, I'm looking, keep me on.
So you need, so you need some of these answers by, by next week? When, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Okay? Because some of this stuff, I'm not putting together here. I'll see what I can do.
Shouldn't be a problem. It's all pretty straightforward.
Absolutely. No, 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 no.
Let me read the list again, Michael. Could I read it again for you?
Oh, God, it hurts. It hurts.
Because I want to, I want to keep the ball rolling. And I think the town, you know, Scott and the building department wants to keep the ball rolling as well. And I don't